Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Wixom City Council Meeting of Tuesday, November fourteenth, two thousand seventeen. If you'll all please stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Buck?
Deputy, or I'm sorry, Mayor Hinckley is excused. Deputy Mayor Ziegler?
Here.
Councilmember Beagle?
Here.
Councilmember Gatchel?
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember Resnick?
Here.
Councilmember Smiley?
Here.
Arm President?
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda? Mr. Brown?
I do have one additional piece of correspondence that I provided to the council this evening for you to review. Brief summary of it is related to a concern that's been brought to us, sorry, a concern that has been brought to us from a variety of sources about concerns with traffic and better options for handling that traffic on Grand River between Wixom and Napier Roads. We have a lot of it.
I wonder if maybe we should add this to new business. It'll be, let's add it to new business right before the closed session.
That sounds fine. I think we should discuss this.
That way we'll be able to talk about it, give us a chance to take a look at it and see what's in it.
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody from here? Yes, Mr. Resnick?
Thank you, Mayor Elect, or may I call you Deputy Mayor? I'm not sure.
Thank you.
I would like to move Correspondence Number Two, Emergency Purchase of Bay Station Manual for the Fire Department. I've had one question, but it has New Business Item Number Twelve there.
Okay. Anything else? All right. We've got a couple of public hearings this evening, and they both involve the requests for tax abatement. The first public hearing is associated with the establishment of an industrial development district for Land Row Development Company in accordance with Public Act one ninety-eight of nineteen seventy-four as amended. I think what we'll do, before we get any further, I forgot to mention, I think I'm supposed to mention that we're being televised tonight, or being recorded tonight by Walt Lake Schools, so welcome Walt Lake Schools, and thanks for coming out tonight. The purpose of that is so that everybody is aware of it when they come up to, if somebody decides to come up and make a statement, they know they're being recorded and they end up on TV someday, so anyway, that's the warning. Mr. Brown, you want to talk about the public hearing, the first public hearing that we're gonna have here?
I would ask Senator Barker to come up and provide an update as to what we're discussing here at this public hearing, Your Honor.
As Deputy Mayor mentioned, this is in regards to a request to establish a industrial development district, which is a first step in the tax abatement process. This is first in vacant land going west on Pontiac Trail on the north side of Land Row, which is a private road, not complete road, it's gravel. There is some acreage associated with this, and the owners are requesting this district to be established to help encourage development. It's used as a practice throughout Michigan, and this is the first that we've had, to my knowledge, on record. And just for the public to be aware, the establishment, if council were to accept this and establish a district, it would not guarantee a tax abatement. Anyone coming into that development would have to apply under regular laws of tax abatement application.
Okay. Thank you. Perhaps what we'll do is read the rules for a public hearing and then move on with the public hearing. Persons desiring to address the council shall state their name and address. Individual persons shall be allowed five minutes to address the council. There should be no questioning by the audience of persons addressing council. However, the council members may question persons addressing the council. And no person shall be allowed to address the council more than once. Having gone over the rules, I'll open the public hearing relative to the Land Row request. Anybody like to make a public comment? Have any questions or have any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing regarding the Land Row request. That'll take us to another request that's scheduled for today's meeting, and that is a public hearing associated with the establishment of an industrial development district and industrial facility tax certificate for Trailer Technologies Holdings LLC in accordance with Public Act one ninety-eight of nineteen seventy-four as amended. Could we have a presentation as far as that's concerned?
Once again, this application is from Trailer Technology Holdings, more commonly known as Kentucky Trailer Technologies. They have a location that they own currently in Walt Lake, and they lease the property in Lion Township. And they purchased some vacant land here in the city with the same purpose of combining their operations under one roof. They submitted an application for the certificate for a tax abatement, and the first order of business is to establish a district. And so the public hearing is to hear about establishing the district and then also tax abatement for an application of ten years, which is recommended by the tax abatement committee. I should add that the total construction cost estimated is twelve point eight million dollars. They did apply for some personal property in their abatement appeal, but the city voted in two thousand fourteen not to accept any personal property tax abatement.
Okay. Thank you. The rules for this public hearing would be the same as the last, so I'm not gonna read them again, but I will open the public hearing associated with the establishment of an industrial development district for the Trailer Technologies Holdings LLC. Would anybody like to make a comment, ask any questions, address that issue in the public Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes to approve this evening. First is a joint City Council, DDA, Planning Commission, and ZBA meeting of October sixteenth, two thousand seventeen. Do I have a motion?
Promoved.
Any discussion, any corrections, anybody wants to bring up? Yes. Councilwoman Smiley?
One little one here. For attendance on City Council, I was at that meeting, and my name is not on it. It's quite all right.
So I have a motion and a second with the qualifier that Mr. Smiley's name is added to the agenda. Do I have, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. The second set of minutes is the regular City Council meeting of October twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen. Do I have a motion?
Promoved. Support.
Any discussion, comments, points to bring up? I have a motion and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you. Correspondence, we have one item under correspondence. It's a notice of hearing before the Michigan Public Service Commission regarding DTE Electric Company, case number U one eight four zero three. The next item on the agenda is the call to the public. I'll read the rules for public speaking. Call to the public. The public shall address the council during the call to the public, which shall be concluded on the agenda immediately after correspondence and again immediately after new business. The first call to the public immediately after correspondence shall be limited to agenda items only. A person shall not address the council in excess of five minutes unless the time is extended by a majority of vote of the council present. Persons wishing to address the council shall identify themselves and their place of residence and shall state their reason for addressing the council, and all comments by the public shall be made directly to the council. Would anybody like to address the council this evening on any agenda items? Seeing no one, I will close the call, first call to the public. Next item on the agenda is the, are the city manager reports. There's two city manager reports. The first is the Fire Department Report of September two thousand seventeen. Anybody have any questions or comments or points they want to make with the fire chief sitting back there? Hi, Jeff. Okay. The next item is the Police Department Report of September two thousand seventeen. Anybody have any questions, comments, any issues with that? Okay.
You got all dressed up for nothing.
The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the items will be removed from the consent agenda and added to the regular agenda at the end of unfinished or new business. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Support.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. Motion passes. There is no unfinished business, which leads us on to quite a lengthy list of new business The first item on the agenda, on the new business, is recommendation by the Tax Abatement Review Committee to adopt a resolution authorizing establishment of an industrial development district for an eighteen-month trial period at three hundred Land Row Drive and one-ten Land Row Drive, Wixom, Michigan, in accordance with Public Act one ninety-eight of nineteen seventy-four as amended and as requested by Land Row Development Company. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Discussion. Is there anything, Deb, that you want to add or? I appreciate the addition of the minutes of the Tax Abatement Committee. That's helpful to see and review. Councilwoman Resnick?
There's maybe a couple of comments. I think that this is a good thing, the, you know, having looked at this piece of land myself, it being called landlocked from any road and all, it's very, very difficult to market it, and I think that the, you know, the first step in an abatement process is establishing this industrial development district, the IDD, so in accordance with Public Act one ninety-eight, you can't offer an incentive like a tax abatement unless you do this first step, correct? So I think it's actually good, it's one of the tools in the toolbox, and it'll maybe help get that line developed in the future. I'm in support of it.
Thank you. Councilman Beagle?
Thanks. Do we have anybody here tonight from Land Row?
We have several.
Okay. Very good. Yeah. Would you like to come on up?
Jim, I'll, Jim, I'm putting him on the spot. Jim is one of the owners. Brian Nedrow, who is not here.
He's coming.
We've got, you have to come over here.
Come over to the, over here.
And then we've got Bill Clark, who most of you know is a developer. We've got John Savoy, is your realtor. Are you picking up too?
Chucking off.
Yeah. Who's gonna, who's gonna speak?
Bill. Hi, this is John Savoy. Been working in this market as a professional real estate broker since nineteen eighty-six. Probably really been kind of my home from a business perspective for many, many years. I approached the owners of this property to try to convince them to develop the site and to put improvements into the site. And as you know, or you may have noticed, I don't really see a lot of new roads going in anywhere, even though the economy is very robust at the time. We're starting to get to the point where a lot of the industrial asset that has been developed in the early, late nineties and early two thousands are now starting to finally, you know, sold, development is beginning to occur. So I came to these gentlemen and tried to convince them, or I'm trying to convince them, to develop that site, and my suggestion was to try to establish a tax abatement district because property is owned for the lay of industrial use, and as was mentioned earlier, Resnick, the, having it in place helps the process. Now, I will say, of all the communities that I've worked in southeast Michigan, can I say hi, moms, it's where I'm on TV? Wixom is the best city I've ever worked in.
Thank you.
Most lucrative, you know, the reputations, the capital. At the same time, there are often times where I, as a broker, the companies will come to me and say, where should we go? And it happens a lot. And I will show different communities, and you can go here, you can go there, you can go here, you can go there. And Wixom won most of the times in my life that I've been involved with because it's just been pro-business. You can get things done, it doesn't take forever, and people often don't plan well enough in advance when they're planning a project to realize how long it takes. Some of the municipal approvals can take quite a lengthy time. Not necessarily as much in Wixom, you know, because Wixom really isn't done. Having the district set up, at the end of the day, probably saves thirty, sixty days in the overall process. So I approached them and said, guys, if I can convince you to do this, I'm suggesting you approach the city and see if they can, would consider creating this as an industrial district in advance to take some of the potential financial stake out of doing this. Because it is risky, and I will tell you, we have no, no given agenda, nobody in the wings that we're trying to sneak onto the site or anything right now, or we don't have any of that. This is, you know, pure speculation. So we think it's high. At the same time, it's very expensive, and it's risky to put roads in. So that's why we're here, you know, asking you for this potential tax abatement.
Councilwoman Resnick?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. One other question. The one-ten lot, is that accessible from Pontiac Trail if it were to be developed? It's hard to tell from, one-ten's, the one that's up front, or at least it looks it.
That's accessible from Pontiac Trail.
Okay, so if that gets developed with the spec, believe you could put the entrance to that off of Pontiac Trail?
Exactly.
Okay, but the three hundred is the one that's almost to the bike trail in the back. Yep, okay.
What makes it a little bit, actually quite a bit riskier is normally when you put a road in, common sense, you want to get both sides. But in this instance, the land to the west side is all the way, so there's no net gain. So you really don't need a road for one side. So that's why, you know, to my mind, it's even more important to have this hopefully in place.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Smiley?
Thank you. Great meeting you gentlemen, thanks for coming. And the minutes for the tax abatement were very helpful, they answered most of the questions I had initially, so I do appreciate those being in there. There was some debate going back and forth as to, you know, you know, three years, two years, six months. I'm just wondering if the eighteen months that was arrived upon for this trial period, if that, if you think that'll work, that that's gonna be good enough, or, I mean, short of having a crystal ball, that is.
We would obviously prefer longer.
Okay.
But we would prefer that that could be, that that timeframe would begin, you know, once the development was underway versus today.
Oh, okay, I see.
So that'll take, so to that end, to answer your question, twenty-four months would be better. Because it's gonna take a while to, you know, to get the whole project approved, and a lot of that time could get evened out with that. So to answer your question, a little bit longer would be nicer.
Yeah. Is that something with tax abatement?
Yeah, let me just explain, when it's a project, that means getting the road in, getting the, you know, all the types of document structure. The water sewer is there, but Bill, maybe you can address this a little bit better. It's not putting buildings in there, it's just getting the layout of the lane.
Understood.
Good evening, members of the City Council. Bill Clark, Quarters Development. I've been a member of the community here since nineteen eighty-six. Some of you know me, but we've developed a lot of buildings here, and this is our home base. As far as the timeframe when we would appreciate this start is once permits were issued. Currently, my company is, our charge is to develop a condominium design, get it recorded with the county, start pricing out the roadway, and then go in for construction permitting. All of that process is likely gonna take the next three to four months to get that complete. Our condominium design is within two or three weeks of being ready to submit to open the county for approval. And once that has been approved, then we're all seen ahead. With eighteen months being a short window, if we could have a particular start date to act, like permit issuance, that would be helpful. Or if we could talk about just in a straight twenty-four months, we could start anytime, you know, as far as we're concerned. But being in the business as I have been, one of the first questions that potential customers ask is, is there abatements available, or what's here in this community? And to tout the fact that, yes, we have a tax district, and if you qualify it, that's your word as your business, you know, and then we bring them into the city to present their case, and it's decided here at municipal level that particular ten users is qualified to receive tax abatement. But we just want to be able to calculate that. We sold, let me give you an example, we sold a lot of land in Lion Township on Grand River by Napier, an industrial park that we built years ago, because the entire park is a tax district. And as soon as the client says, hey, what's available, I mean, you can lay it right out, now you're on a level playing field, and then a lot of times, you're ahead of some of the other communities around us that don't offer the same, don't have the insight to be able to, to offer that to attract the future.
I know you're on the tax, that's why I'm looking at you, you're on the Tax Abatement Board. Is it being a trial period, is it something that, if things are moving along to the satisfaction of the Tax Abatement Board, they can, you know, revisit it if a little more time is needed, that kind of thing?
Yes, yeah, that was the idea.
Okay, so this helps kind of make sure things keep moving?
Right. And we've realized we're kind of treading on new ground here, so we didn't want to come in and say we need to pull a loan this or that. We're a community member, we're a partner here with the city, and we want to make this work.
Yeah, I do try and support this, and I think, I think we're in good shape. Thank you.
Councilman Gatchel?
Thank you. Looking further down the road, I know the condominium kind of ideas come up before, or at least been mentioned. Is the goal for you to hold that, or to sell it to an investor, put in their portfolio? I'm just kind of curious, because we're talking about tax abatements, and we're gonna offer it as a marketing incentive essentially, so I'm a little trying to play catch-up, I guess, about what the end goal is.
The current owners of the property, and they'll have, you know, addressed this issue. Jim Chase.
Thank you. We were in the community since nineteen eighty, pulled our building there, three point two eight. Probably part of the community, and have been a long time. We intend to, we've got our building, it's forty acres, and we'd like to have it be part of the community. We think it's a nice piece of property, it really goes all the way to Maple, and it also goes away to Pontiac Trail. It'd be awful nice to not have the problem there with the traffic coming north and south and everything, and also the rear look like that, it's always considering this happening to be okay. So we'd like to be involved with the community for a long time, and, you know, make it a nice, nice facility, but that's the intent.
The intent, though, I kind of heard, is to build like a condominium suite, industrial condos or commercial condos, it seems like, and I know we have a few other parks like that where occasionally we'll have a company come in and ask for an abatement on their interior remodeling essentially. Is that what we're looking at, or are you going to sell off the land once it's marketable because there's a road there? I'm just trying to figure out what the end goal is. Are you gonna pay to build everything and then be a landlord, or are you gonna put it in somebody else's portfolio, basically?
Well, I think, of course, the situation, the understanding, the current owners are continuing to own it. The benefit of the condominium in this case is the individual lots will be set to the individual, while road and the common areas are maintained by the condominium.
It's in the chart.
So it's that road, it's not gonna be, currently, it's not a true road, it's not like Pontiac Trail, so the chance of dedicating that to open the county or anybody, so there has to be a mechanism in place for maintenance. So that's where the condominium really comes into play. I'd like to just comment on one other thing, and not to say anything that against whatever downset, but as far as that lot on Pontiac Trail, my recommendation's gonna be that we get a draw on Land Row Drive rather than Pontiac Trail for safety. We got enough going on over in Pontiac for a lot. That's only my two cents, and I'm just a designer and developer.
To further answer your question, back west, back north, Grand Oaks Conference Center, what's the name of your development on the next one?
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight, they were all condominium, they're all industrial condominiums. It became popular because if you planted a state years ago, it would take a year and a half, two years, whereas with a site condominium, it can occur very, very quickly. So it's essentially the same concept as if it were planted.
From the city logistics side, the resolution that it looks like was included is a little... From the city logistics side, the resolution that it looks like was included is a little sparse on details. And so we're talking about eighteen months from, they are asking from the date we issue permits. How do we address that at the city level? Is that just an administrative thing that your department knows that the clock doesn't start until the permits go out? Or do we need to include something like that in here?
Well, I might wanna refer this to Steve, but we decided to not include the timeframe in the resolution. It would be monitored by administration, and then, you know, reviewed at, after whatever time was established by council. Should, it should be reviewed.
And what are, what are we looking for whenever the eighteen months begin, or X number of months? What are we looking for?
If condo hasn't been developed, and, uh, no designs have been developed, and no marketing has happened, then...
Does the road need to be in, is that a stipulation, or?
That would be great.
We could have a little time to get the road in, I don't know.
No, I...
Oh, no, 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 he needs it, are we requiring the road to be in?
With an ALC answer, I think. If in eighteen months the road isn't in, is that an automatic, period is over kind of thing, or what?
Well, we can define, no, we brought up all these things, and they're probably in the minutes. We brought up all of these things in the minutes, it's just, we're gonna review it again after whatever set time, he said eighteen months. Uh, and then, you know...
Does it come back to us, or from this point, reviewing, is that just handled administratively?
I assume it would be administratively.
All right, those are my questions, just a lot to work out, I think that's still up in the air in terms of the details and what exactly the goals are within the period, so. Those were my questions, I get it from a marketing perspective, I've shown a bunch of the other condos as well, so, all right.
Thank you, I, just, um, I guess, to stick up for the tax abatement committee, I, I think I should make a couple of comments. Yeah, we, we did discuss some of those things. The idea was to come up with, uh, an eighteen-month period, and, and if there's progress being made, and, and they need an extension, and we can see it's pretty obvious that there's progress being made, and, and it's moving forward, then probably we would consider extending it beyond that. But any extension or any, anything that, that, that committee did would come here after that, so, so everybody would be aware of it. And I think that the idea that the administration would be the one to, to, you know, choose the start date, and, you know, as long as... I mean, they're, they're responsible, they're not gonna just sit on it forever, I don't think, and, and, anyway, that's, I think, the right way to do it. The only quest, anybody else have anything to add or comment? The, uh, you mentioned, was there an interest on anybody's part of extending it beyond the eighteen months, or you brought that up?
Oh, no, just from the minutes, there was some debate, someone said three years, there was no time period initially, I just wondered if...
Okay, there's another amendment that's been proposed. All right, all right, so then, then we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, um, next item on the agenda is recommendation by the Tax Abatement Review Committee to adopt a resolution authorizing establishment of an industrial development district at four eight two eight two Frank Street in accordance with Public Act one ninety-eight of nineteen seventy-four as amended, and as requested by Trailer Technology Holdings, LLC. Do I have a motion?
So moved?
Support.
Discussion. Go ahead.
Um, again, this is the first, uh, series of the tax abatement application, and it's establishing the district. Without the district establishment, there's no need to go any further. Again, they are, Trailer Technologies for the public purpose. They're gonna be building a brand-new one hundred and thirty-four thousand square foot building, approximately three thousand square foot building. The estimated cost is about twelve point eight million. They are adding another, uh, almost a couple million in personal property to the site, um, adding another fifteen, twenty new employees at the site. I provided, uh, had five of their marketing packets left over from the tax abatement committee. It is provided to the five of you who haven't seen it before. You can see by those, these are very high-tech trailers. If you have any further questions or comments here from any trailer, we'd be happy to answer any specifics.
Would you like to come on up and tell us a little bit about the company and the project?
Thanks for the opportunity to appear here, Deputy Mayor and City Council. My name's Tom Harper, I think you requested that we give our address. I do live in Northville, so I apologize for that. Anyway, I've been with, uh, the Trailer Technologies for about nineteen years. And as mentioned, we have two facilities right now, we're very excited about joining the Wixom community and combining those into one facility. Uh, the company is owned by a company called Kentucky Trailer, that's been around since eighteen seventy-nine, so we've got a very robust history. Been family owned for much of that time, most of that time, since nineteen thirty-six. We do build it, you've seen the brochure and some of the products, we do build, build some really extremely high-end, um, some people call them sexy projects, but, you know, we do business with some very high-profile companies, our Fortune five hundred companies are really our mark, that's our target. Those are the kinds of folks that have the budgets to sustain the kind of products that we build. So, uh, I just wondered if there's any questions about the product, that anybody has? We manufacture trailers and containers and trucks and any kind of specialty vehicle. It's used to mobilize people's businesses, or use for laboratories, we build the mobile command centers that the FBI do business on. So if there's a crisis response in, in Wixom that requires the FBI, it'll be at Kentucky Trailer Technologies, built right here on Pontiac Trail. A lot of folks don't know that, you know, we build high-tech, expanding trailers that are used for everything, from mobile marketing displays to, um, Will Smith, the after his party barge, and anything in between. We do a lot of closed automotive transport trailers as well, so, uh, been around a long time and do some really interesting, fun projects. We do a lot of work with the government, Lockheed Martin, a lot of, a lot of stuff from the US Army. And we're in the process of building a bunch of those right now. One of the things that we're doing is building M-one, A-one tank simulators, and allow our troops to be trained on how to run a tank in advance, and actually be trained on a tank, which we think is a good thing. That's, that's about it for that, I don't know if you have any questions for me.
Everybody have any questions?
How many employees will start there, when you, when you open up to a hundred and thirty-four thousand square feet?
Well, that's the sixty-four thousand dollar question. Right now, we're about a hundred, um, we should be about a hundred and fifteen or a hundred and eighteen right now. So our plan is, as submitted, is that we would add five per year over the next three years, which is still the plan. But we have, you know, an issue right now with some attrition, and we are really working diligently to try to place more, so. In fact, we just participated in the job fair that was put on in October.
That was my next question.
Yeah. So we were there, and we actually are currently actively screening several applicants from that job fair, and we're hoping to land a couple out of that. Just for what it's worth, and with, uh, the risk of Brown knows a little bit, our HR director did tell me today that she goes through a lot of these, and this is the best put-on job fair, she thinks. So, uh, that was impressive, and I appreciate hearing that. You know, we do aggressively hope to, or we do aggressively seek to hire these five, five and five over the next three years, starting in nineteen, then all the backfill for any turnover that we would achieve, or that we would experience, plus what we've got right now, a little bit of shortfall. So we're looking to hire people, and we're looking to place big folks that are good, solid folks, and, and we're very hopeful we will be able to do that here. You know, and draw from the Oakland Technical Center and the Wall Lake and Talladega School District, obviously.
That was my third question, have you been introduced to the Oakland Tech Center yet?
We have, uh, we have, and it's our intention to, to lean, to lean on those folks as much as we can to try to bring in good quality applicants, new people, so. You know, we've got good jobs available for people, uh, and it's a chance for them to learn a trade.
A lot of that mechatronics and, as well as some of the fabrication?
Well, we've got all the major trades like building a building, so it's basically, what we make is almost a commercial building on wheels, and, and everything's built to the, you know, the standard codes, the building codes that you expect in a commercial building. So we've got HVAC guys, we've got electricians, we've got high-volt and low-volt electricians, we've got assemblers that are working, we've got paint folks and, and material finishing and, and everything in between. Anything that you see in here, you know, one of our trailers isn't that much smaller than, uh, about two-thirds of this room, so. They're very large, I would invite any of you that would like to see any of that, to please come and visit us. You know, currently on Pontiac Trail, in Wall Lake, and obviously soon will be, hopefully, uh, June, we're hoping to be in and build the product right here in the next several months. One of the other things that I think is relevant is the fact that we have, um, you know, besides the hiring piece, we get to the point where we are so busy, which is how we have, less than we've been for quite a few years now, that we have overflow where we just don't have enough of these folks in the trades to do what we need to do. So we would be looking to draw on local, uh, any local tradesmen that we can, with respect to electrical contracting and HVAC and any of the other general possibilities that we could draw on. So that's something else, and, you know, another reason to love us, I hope, is because, you know, while we build these really cool products, we also have a lot of visitors. So we get folks from all over the world that come in, and they'll be able to be, you know, they'll be staying in hotels here, and hopefully going to restaurants here. All of our employees, hundred-plus employees, are gonna be buying much, and, you know, doing things to help and support this community. We're excited about it.
Okay, well, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, just to review that, we've got a recommendation and a second. There's a recommend, on a recommendation by the Tax Abatement Review Committee to adopt a resolution authorizing the establishment of an industrial development district at four eight two eight two Frank Street in accordance with Public Act one ninety-eight of nineteen seventy-four as amended, and as requested by Trailer Technologies Holdings, Inc., LLC. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda, this is kinda just, um, kinda following up on the one we just did. Recommendation by the Tax Abatement Review Committee to adopt a resolution authorizing the issuance of a ten-year industrial facilities exemption certificate for real property, as requested by Trailer Technologies Holdings, LLC in accordance with Public Act one ninety-eight of nineteen seventy-four as amended. Do I have a motion?
Move, support.
A motion and a second, um, discussion? Um, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, thank you. Uh, next item is a recommendation by the Tax Abatement Review Committee to authorize the execution of a tax abatement agreement with Trailer Technologies Holdings, LLC, and that the mayor and the city clerk be authorized to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. Do I have a motion?
Moved?
Support.
Have a motion and a second, discussion? Yes, Councilman Reston?
One comment, one question. Uh, you know, this is the type of, uh, business that, I think it's great that we attract, uh, small boutique manufacturing businesses like this to our community, employing a hundred people, and they're buying houses, they're eating at the restaurants, and they're, you know, they're part of the community. So I think, uh, these are great, and I think it's nice to have this tool in our toolbox, uh, to be able to attract, uh, someone that's gonna build and own the building that they build here in the city. Uh, one of the questions I had was one of some nomenclature here. The, where do we actually spell out the fifty percent on real property? I didn't see it in the agreement or the certificate, and I just couldn't figure out where the fifty percent is. Either that, or I just missed it, and I read it about four times.
Well, the, uh, Act one, Act one ninety-eight is a fifty percent.
It is, okay, so it's spelled out in the act itself?
Yeah, it's in the act, yeah.
Okay. But I, it, I just have a recollection of in times past, we've actually said a fifty percent on real or fifty percent on personal property in the actual certificate itself.
Not, I don't know about the, not the agreement, but in the certificate, probably, it was not on it.
I, I couldn't find it, but again, I may have overlooked it, but...
Because I think we've been using the same format for several years, so...
Okay, um, all right, um, I have a motion and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, thank you. Okay, um, the next item on the agenda is recommendation to approve the, an amendment to the City of Wixom Downtown Development Authority's bylaws and rules of procedure. Do I have a motion?
So moved?
Support.
Discussion. So you, Debbie, you're gonna tell us what we're doing here?
The DDA, uh, accepting the, uh, excuse me, the DDA, as part of the Main Street program, decided they wanted to include language in the bylaws describing the, the Main Street and how they would follow the Main Street program, so that's most of what was in here as far as the changes and additions to the bylaws. And, uh, another item of interest was that, uh, the, uh, each, each DDA board member would at some point in their four-year appointment, uh, serve as either chairperson or vice-chairperson during the, their time on board. So at the recent meeting in October, the board voted unanimously accepting the law.
Okay, and, uh, a short description of Main Street program from Oakland County, you wanna just mention that?
Well, it's actually a national program, and, um, Oakland County is the only county in the United States that has joined that county, and we fall under that umbrella and are able to join the Main Street program. So according to the National Main Street, we are not a traditional downtown. And so, but because of Oakland County's joining, we can fall under their umbrella and follow, get all the same benefits as all the other cities in the United States.
Any questions? Okay, uh, we've got a, um, recommendation to approve an amendment to the, uh, City of Wixom Downtown Development Authority's bylaws and rules and procedures. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, thanks. All right, um, the next item on the agenda is a recommendation to adopt a local governing body resolution for charitable gaming licenses for the nonprofit baseball organization known as the Commerce Cannons of Wixom, Michigan. Do I have a rec, do I have a motion?
So moved? Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion on this? Do you wanna describe what we're, what this is about?
Yeah, essentially, when you have a, a local nonprofit like, uh, this baseball organization, it's looking to participate with, uh, gaming in terms of fundraising opportunities. There's a requirement that a local governing body recognize them as what they're purporting, they're, they're representing themselves to be, that being a charitable organization that qualifies to participate in these kind of fundraiser activities. So it's kind of like a, uh, preliminary requirement for them to go further in the process, so they're just looking for an action on your part to recognize them.
Anybody coming, walking around the neighborhoods and knocking on doors?
They will not be, by knowledge.
Just curious. Um, any questions?
Pardon? They'd be subject to our ordinances anyways.
Councilman Smiley?
Thank you. Um, they're called the Commerce Cannons, but they draw from Commerce, Woolbury Lake and Wixom, something like that, is that why?
Commerce, Walt Lake and Wixom, I think.
Walting, that's...
Yeah.
That's their territory, I suppose?
Right.
That's why we gotta do this too?
Correct.
That's all.
Okay. Do I have a motion and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Number seven, recommendation to approve a contract with Trivium Racing, Inc., for timing services associated with the DDA-hosted five K and ten... timing services associated with the DDA-hosted 5K and 10K race to be held on May 5, 2018, and authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city. Do I have a motion?
So moved?
Support.
Any discussion? Councilman Resnick?
Just a question. This past year, the first of the races that Trivium did, what was the draw total? How many people?
Uh, there were 140 registered, but there was more like 160.
Oh, very good. Okay, so it was a first-year event, that was very good. So, those things tend to grow anyway, so. Very good. Thank you.
Anybody else? Councilman Smiley?
Go ahead. Help me understand. This is a DDA event. Why, why, why does the city pay for this event?
Because we earned the money last year and paid back what we invested in last year by the runners and sponsors that signed up after the fact. So, last year, we also made enough to put aside for this year's contract, which is.
Oh, it's paying for itself. Oh, that's, that's good.
Yeah, but we're getting out of our account, our DDA account, but it was.
So, essentially, they are paying.
Pulled over from last year.
They are paying for it from their account, then? We're just making, oh, perfect.
They're paying from their account within our budget.
Right, right.
Which is their funds that they've run, correct?
Okay, that's all I need to know. Thank you. Perfect.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Number eight, recommendation to approve the Community Development Block Grant Program Year 2017 Subrecipient Agreement between Oakland County and the City of Wixom, and authorize the mayor, Kevin W. Hankley, to sign the agreement on behalf of the city. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Okay. Deanna, you want to, excuse me. Any comments?
Basically, this is a standard form. You've approved subrecipient agreements for years in the past. The only difference is this time they've changed the timing of when they have the councils. They have HUD authorize the money first, and then come back and approve the agreement, which basically says that HUD is going to give the money to Oakland County. Oakland County is telling, the city's saying, we're going to spend the money appropriately as we apply the application.
Okay. Anybody have any comments or questions? Okay, well, we've got a recommendation to approve the Community Development Block Grant Program Year 2017 Subrecipient Agreement between Oakland County and the City of Wixom, and authorize the mayor and to sign the agreement on behalf of the city. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Okay, the ninth item on the agenda, recommendation to accept Hubble, Roth and Clark's Engineering Services Proposal for a second I-96 water main crossing for a total not to exceed $23,000 for design engineering and $21,000 for construction engineering. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Support.
Okay. Mr. Brown, you want to?
I would prefer to, our DPW director, Tim Sigma, to walk us through the coverage of this.
All right. This recommendation is for the water main that goes from our water tower across I-96 into the old General Trailer area. And the idea is that we need a second loop underneath I-96 so that for water quality purposes and for water usage, excuse me. And this has been in our water, water master plan for a number of years. This area along 12 Mile is looking to be developed here soon, and to make sure that this piece is in place so that we can move forward with future development there. We're worried that if there were future development without this, we wouldn't be able to support the water quality that we need in that area. So, we have two, two sources going across I-96 so that eventually it will be moved.
How does this, I'm sorry, how does this change the water quality?
So, so one, one aspect of it is making sure that there's enough water going through the system, and that's the quality portion. The other piece is enough water so that we can support both sides simultaneously. And if, if we get a problem with, with the portion between the I-96, we wouldn't be able to support the entire area. So, that's, the idea is for the loop system to, to maintain full size of the portion that breaks, for example. We're able to get it from another source, and that would be the water quality issue.
Just, just to help me out, how many people is that support over there? Or what, how many businesses are there that support on that loop? And wouldn't we be able to just do like what Commerce did and hook up to or get something from Novi if we had a problem?
There, there is that potential, yes. There's also the fire flow issues that we found. I'm not sure if the chief can speak to those, but when we were trying to flush the system of the well water this past time, we actually, the fire department helped us on that.
Okay. And how many people or how many businesses?
The businesses, the businesses that are involved currently or future?
What is just, what vacant properties over there that you're talking about?
So, from, from, what, the bar on Sam's Way all the way to the end of 12 Mile would support them.
So, that, that one piece of road, but aren't, what, that's pretty much all developed down through there? I mean, it's large, large users like General Trailer, the old General Trailer Building, or Sing Tire.
There, there are, what, eight properties there yet?
There's probably four developed, five developed, and two or three that will be redeveloped. They have old buildings on, and then there's probably three vacant.
Okay, so you're going to explain why we just wouldn't tap into Novi?
Well, one, there's no current, there's no private water there currently. There's nothing that runs 12 Mile from Bart's Fielding and Mercury to the end of 12 Mile to I-96.
Is there anything that runs down Grand River for, Novi for water?
There is something that runs there, but it wouldn't support our end of the system.
Okay.
We would have to do some type of tap or valving system on the actual, just to figure that out.
Okay, so it's just another concept is all, is why I'm asking. You know, I mean, how much are we looking at to redevelop this extra loop?
The, the extra loop would be provided by, by the property owners as they connect. But this piece, this piece, the property owners, it's, it's the I-96 portion that.
How much is that, how much, you know, I see the construction and engineering costs, how much is it going to be to construct it?
The estimated cost is $215,000.
Okay. That's all. Appreciate it.
Okay, anybody else?
One more loop question. So, you couldn't flush it because it's not looped? If it was looped, you'd have been able to flush it from our side as a freeway, yeah?
Yeah, and go ahead and explain how.
Currently, the only thing running south is the original bore that was from Ford property through Myers.
Okay, and that's on that side of Wixom Road?
Unfortunately, because that's a dead-headed system that runs to the southwest corner of the city, everything from new development along Wixom Road is flowing south, if you will, and that's starting to create some blow issues for our fire.
Okay, and then just one final question on the construction. It's a horizontal bore that has to be done underneath the roadway?
Yes, it'll be, it'll be a 16-inch HDPA with the internal diameter of 12 inches for water going through. It's the least expensive way to do it, with the more that HDPE doesn't go on.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, we've got a motion to accept Hubble, Roth and Clark's Engineering Services Proposal for a second I-96 water main crossing for a total not to exceed $23,000 for design engineering and $21,000 for construction engineering. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Next item is a recommendation to award the repair work for the east side of the Department of Public Works Cold Storage Building, steel roof to Schreiber Corporation of 29945 Beck Road, Wixom, Michigan, in the amount of $30,000, $30,990 with funds derived from the DPW Storage Building Account Number 411-411-979.390, and approve the associated budget amendment. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Support. Discussion. Tim, you want to tell us what you're doing here?
Sure. Back, we're back in April. We got windstorm that peeled a portion of the roof off of our cold storage building. And at that time, we thought, well, we could replace it with, or we could repair it fairly inexpensively, the steel roof. What we found was it was very difficult to get a contractor in there to look at it initially. And then once we got the contractors in, we found that it was over the $3,000 mark, and by quite a bit, significantly. And what we did was, during that process, we went out to bid. That took longer than expected. We also got in touch with our insurance company, and they gave us a quote to repair only the portion that was damaged. And that was the $17,000 that was, we're not willing to go further with that. But we weren't sure that the rest of our roof would last as long. And so, we recommend at this point, just to do this entire half of the roof and work the other piece in the west side, if you will, into our capital improvements over the next five or six years. Do you think that that will last at least that long? So, that's what we're looking for.
Okay, any questions? Councilman Kennedy?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Schreiber Roof Corporation, that's the guys over there on Beck Road, correct?
That, that is, yes.
Great, okay, thank you.
Okay. Councilman Smiley?
Thanks. I'm fine, this, this sounds fine, and I'm not questioning that work needs to be done at all. Just, I was curious, it says in here that contractors were not interested in bidding on the work?
You know, we, we called a lot of contractors on this, and we were kind of surprised. I don't, we're not sure if it was just, it was too small, or, you know, the, most of the reconstruction contractors are busy with new construction. And we just, you know, other than our local folks, we just couldn't get moving on it. Even when we went to bid on it, we were surprised to only see a few, so.
Well, the good, in the end, is it ended up at the local place, so that's, that's great. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we've got a recommendation to award the repair work for the east side of the Department of Public Works Cold Storage Building, steel roof to Schreiber Corporation on Beck Road in Wixom, Michigan, the amount of $30,990 with funds derived from the DPW Storage Building Account that I mentioned earlier. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thanks, Tim. Next item on the agenda was added by myself on behalf of the city manager, wanting to describe the letter that was drafted, so.
Yeah, we have a, we have a letter that we put together to address the situation on Grand River. We've been receiving some complaints. Deborah Parker's been talking with me about this. We've had subsequent meetings with, with Tim and with HRC to discuss the matter. And essentially, the issue is between Wixom and Napier Roads on, on Grand River, there's, there's some serious traffic issues there, which is a good problem to have because of the fact we've got a lot of, a lot of traffic, a lot of activity in, in town, and that's good. But it's bad in that it's starting to frustrate people, and it's creating issues for us in a variety of ways. Specifically, there's concerns about what impact it's having on redevelopment of properties in that area because it's difficult to, to make a left turn out of the north side of the road, the locations there, without the left turn lane that's missing in the certain sections of it. It's, there's a section where there's a left turn lane nearer to Wixom Road, and there's a section that's further down that has a left turn lane. But in that area on Grand River in our town, there's an area where there is no left turn lane, and that creates a serious issue for people because traffic is backed up, and you just can't get out. So, people are, you know, avoiding doing business in our downtown because it's just too difficult to make that left-hand turn. We're also concerned that perhaps we're not getting some redevelopment activity that because of that, or people are taking a look at it, seeing the, the traffic issues, and, and walking away from potential development in our, in our city. So, we've got some concerns in adder here. We're discussing it with the Road Commission of Oakland County, and this letter is addressed to David Evanco, the chairperson of the Federal Aid Committee, asking them to add that section of Grand River to the discussion for fiscal year 2021 funding. They would possibly look at adding a second turn lane at the Wixom Road intersection. As you're aware, we've had a double fatal accident that, that occurred there recently. There was also another serious injury accident that happened there as well. And that speaks to the problems that we're addressing or seeking to have addressed here. So, there's that double turn lane at Wixom, and then there's also just the addition of a turn lane in that area where it's missing that we're asking for them to consider. So, I was bringing this up for, for consideration or for informational purposes, and it also occurs to the deputy mayor as well as to staff that it might be in our best interest to have some official action by the city council of some sort. So, I'm asking for you to consider that. Tonight, if possible, the sooner we get it in, the better off we are, and that's why we were looking to bring it up tonight, just to, to potentially bring that forward with some support from the mayor and council.
Okay. Josh?
I, I'd recommend that the second left-hand turn is a must-do, not a recommendation, kind of like the, at Grand River and back in Novi. Having done this all throughout football season, it's horrific, the traffic there. It's, why, I know what, how government goes, but 2021's a ways away. Is there any other potential avenue for getting things at least fixed in some method?
I asked Tim to address that.
Yeah, what, what we're really, we're really looking at is making this part of a participation with the Federal Aid Committee, and we meet periodically through the year, and they, they've committed quite a bit of money throughout the, throughout the next three or four years already for that. One interesting thing, though, if we can, if we can start with just the 2021 year, with the cost of it, they may be able to push it or build it earlier if we get it in sooner. You know, they're, Oakland County has been basically awarded 60% of the federal aid just recently with the Federal Aid Committee. So, they are adjusting some of their recommendations to accommodate that, and we're hoping that the sooner we get these kind of recommendations in, the better off we'll be, and the sooner we can get, get that piece in queue. So, we're looking for the federal funding companies.
Okay, so that's why it's pushed off, right?
Yeah, and they've already committed to, you know, 18, 19, 19, 20. But if, if the number is right, just depending on how things settle with the other ones, if, say, there's a, there's a project that stalls because of something they can't take to happen, they'll, they'll adjust other ones in priority based on it, so.
Okay, and they, I see it's ranked 115th for crashes, probably. Is there a priority list? How do we fall on that?
There, there are priority lists. It depends on what the other applicants are recognizing. But the more information, that's why we, we dug this up with interest and help to get this information and put it out there. The less they need to look at, the better off our chances are as well.
And the Wixom Grand River Interchange is actually 14th, so that's, well, the combination of the two might help us move up on the priority scale there when you have the two pieces together. That's the idea.
Okay. All right, that was just my question. It seemed like a long ways off for addressing an everyday issue now.
Yes.
We're hoping for better, but.
Councilman Resnick?
Welcome to the federal road funding system. The, I agree wholeheartedly with Councilman Gottschall that that must be a second left turn lane. It's got to mirror what they have at Grand River back to be. It's got to mirror what they have at Grand River and Beck to be effective, I think. The, City Manager Brown, you were asking whether we, you want us to propose a resolution then, or...
Potentially, yeah, that's, it was, it came up so late in the day here today, unfortunately, that we didn't really have a good time to, to formulate our thoughts on that, but the, the potential could be having a formal resolution. It could also just be directing me to have the, the communication redrafted with the signature line for all of you, get your signatures on it, turn it in that way. I think that would communicate it as well, so...
Just one thought, is there a way to find out if the traffic flow at the eastbound Grand River onto northbound Beck is any less than what we see at Wixom? And put that as another statistic.
Another selling...
Because they have the two left lanes there, I watched it today, and they, it took a long time for both lanes to actually make it, too.
Yeah, we can check into that further.
It might, might...
Might be another...
Be additive, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, I mean, I would definitely support administration pursuing this.
Okay.
And, you know, if there's a way to move it up a year, it'd be great.
Make a second then. So, we've got a motion then to, to draft a, a letter...
Of support for this project, be signed by council.
Yep, so move.
Councilman Resnick?
Yep.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Do you know what the motion is?
Okay.
Okay, got a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion passed. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a memorandum that was in the correspondence. Mr. Resnick, I believe that you wanted to address emergency purchase of base station radio for the fire department. You had a question?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yes, I had one question. So, we had initially, during the budget sessions, allocated twenty thousand dollars for a complete replacement of a base station system, right? And the memorandum here states that the six thousand seven hundred thirty-four dollars replaces, not repairs, but replaces the faulty piece of equipment, and that the upgrade to the, the uber radio system that was thought to be needed is not going to be required. Is that a correct statement?
Kind of.
Kind of, okay.
What constitutes the system is all the individual pagers, and then there's a unit that's called an encoder that actually activates the pager, but that's done through a base radio station. With the scheduled upgrade to the Oakland County radio system that is beyond three years at this time, and I verified that just recently, the current replacement base station that was put in service and is operational at this time is, is a, is a good purchase, and even if, in fact, in three to four years or four and a half, five years, I'm sure the county could, does go ahead and replaces it with something that brings greater technology into the paging network, meaning system, we could recover some of that cost because this system is still used nationally.
Okay, so we'll still have to have in our ten-year capital plan some monies for that three years from now?
Well, the hope is the nine-one-one surcharge that the county assesses will pay for a new system because it will have to upgrade the entire county.
Entire county, okay. All right, so right now, we're only going to spend the six thousand seven hundred thirty-four versus the twenty, we thought.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Which is a good, good news piece of the story.
Okay, very good, and I guess... Thanks for answering that. Let's just take care of that. The next item on the agenda then is the recommendation and request to convene closed session of the city council in accordance with the Open Meetings Act for the purposes of discussing attorney-client privileged communication pursuant to and authorized by MCL fifteen point two-six-eight-H. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Part.
Motion and a second. Ms. Buck?
Councilmember Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilmember Resnick?
Yes.
Councilmember Smiley?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Ziegler?
Yes.
Councilmember Beagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Bachel?
Yes.
Six, yes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the second call to the public, and I went over the rules earlier in the evening, and several people have left, nobody else has come in since I have, so I'm not going to repeat them. So, anybody have any comments they'd like to make to the council? Anybody would like to come up and address us at the call, the second call to the public? Seeing no one, I'll close the call, the second call to the public. City managers' comments. Mr. Brown?
Yep. So, a couple of items that were included in the city manager's update. If you have any questions on it, please let me know. Good results on the drug take-back day, over forty pounds of unused unwanted prescriptions were returned to the Wixom Police Department. Councilman Kennedy had talked about that in the past, that keeps it out of our water system and helps us to avoid some complications that come about because of that, so we're proud to have that good result, pleased to have people participate. The news on the airline trail covers a variety of things, including the fact that there was a good open house process. An update on that front was the, and I think it's an update here, the actual grant application has been filed, and we're hopeful that we'll have a good result on that, as we do here that it's a priority project across the state or at the state level, so we're hopeful that that turns out to be true and we have a good result in the grant process. There was also a DNR grant that was initially projected to be thirty-five thousand dollars and actually ended up being fifty thousand dollars, so that's another piece of good news to add to the funding stream for that potential development of the Michigan Airline Trail. Other than that, I leave the rest of it for your reading pleasure. If you have anything you want to question me about, feel free to bring it up now, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Kennedy?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Ziegler. Part of the, where you talked about the MDOT no longer requires the Act fifty-one audit, I really think that's great, you know, I hope it was just more than us putting in that resolution, the request, and asked them to get rid of that, but that really was a burden, some expense to the city, and I'm glad to see that we're, everybody's gotten rid of that. Other than that, thank you very much, hon.
Thank you.
Yeah, the MML, the Michigan Municipal League, was very heavily involved in that process. I had conversations with people that led to our action to, to pass that resolution of opposition, which I don't feel hurt one bit, and was probably helpful to that process, and I was pleased to see that eliminated as well. It was an ill-advised move of the state, and I was pleased to see their ready admission of that and ready taking back of it, which is what they agreed to do. We are going to be reimbursed for the cost that we incurred, and we're not even going to finalize the audit because it's just the breaks we're putting on.
Great. Councilman Beagle?
Thanks, I just want to thank the citizens of Wixom for their support last Tuesday during Election Day, like, congratulations, like, the three winners up here on the dais and two members of the library board. Well, three others, three others. Yeah.
I'm sorry. I thought you were...
Well, maybe I wasn't happy to... No, I just... I meant to say thanks.
All right, thank you. Councilman Gottschall?
Thank you. I just want to wish everybody a safe and happy Thanksgiving. Yes.
Councilman Smiley?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and Mayor-elect Ziegler. That's too long.
Sorry.
Okay. Just, it popped up a couple times tonight, people, you know, you know, showering Wixom with accolades, you know, it's been great working with, you know, the, the staff, and I just want to, you know, say how proud I am that, you know, we, we have such a great group. You had, Mr. Brown had mentioned in one of your items here that the building department received an enthusiastic and sincere email from all electrical, all city electrical contractors. Again, more praise being heaped upon us, and I just, you know, wanted to, you know, point out, you know, Mr., Mr. Dennis Smith is out here, too, and, you know, that's, that goes to him and all of our staff. Um, congratulations also to the four winners last Tuesday. Excited to be working with them another two years, or four years, sorry. And, sorry, had, oh, and have Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Councilman Resnick?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I, I thought the, the West Oakland Regional Job Fair, I thought that was quite a success, and it's a shame that there were only thirty-six spaces, but a question for you, out of the thirty-six companies that registered there, how many were Wixom companies? Do you know?
Uh, over half.
Over half?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, great. So, quite honestly, if we had another job fair, we could probably get forty or fifty companies to...
Well, we, we would reduce the eight-foot tables down to six-foot tables, we'd be able to get at least ten more in there, we think. And then, we've actually reserved for April twenty-third and reserved the senior center as well because we found that people were going up onto the stage to do interviews and to fill out applications.
Okay, so it was quite active. Great, good, I'm glad to hear that. Also, I would like to thank the citizens of the city of Wixom and for giving your confidence in me for their term, and congratulate all other three winners up here as well to, and we'll, we'll see how it goes January first with a new, well, a little bit different look up here, so, very good, I think that's all I have to make.
Thank you. Actually, it'll be this exact same, January first. Um... Yeah, no, I think everybody's pretty... Anyway, I, I have a couple things to say, actually. I, I went to the job fair and stopped by, and I was, I was really pleased that, at how active it was. I noticed that the fire department had a booth set up. Jeff, was there any, any, anybody from that job fair that turned out to be a good candidate?
I believe we have three applicants, and they are in the process of background investigation and fiscal interviews and that sort of thing.
Great, that's wonderful. I was going to mention the MDOT audits as well, and I, I, I think it was the action we took, actually, that, that turned the tide, so that's... I wanted to congratulate and, and thank Kathy Buck for the, yet another flawless election, and particularly in light of the fact that it was a new system that, that we had going, and, and it was really a beautiful day for it, and, and, and everything was worked, it looked very smooth, and I understand also that a couple of people from other clerk's offices around the area came to help out for, for free, just to, to learn the new system. They didn't have elections in their, their community. Where, where were those people from, Kathy?
Two from Highland and two from Milford.
That's great, that they were able to come and learn the system from the pro. That's wonderful.
They knew where to go.
Congratulations. I also wanted to congratulate Councilman Resnick and Councilman Beagle and Councilman Kennedy on their reelections to council, and I wanted to also congratulate Christie Courier and Allison Wirt for their election to the, to the library board. Finally, I would like to also thank the electorate, electorate for supporting my candidacy. I'm both honored and humbled to be elected, you know, even though it was, it was uncontested, I, I was very pleased with the outcome, and I usually, I usually get kind of motivated by elections. I like to get out and knock on doors. I didn't do as much of it this, this year, but I did get around some, and it was, it was gratifying, as it usually is, for the people that actually talked to me, because some of them just kind of closed the door, point to the no soliciting sign, you know, but that's okay, I can take that. But it was, it was, I got a lot of good feedback, particularly right after the, the water incident that took place. Got a lot of good feedback. I, I was talking to one woman that said she'd lived in, in our city for about twenty years, and she really didn't realize how well-planned that we had it here, and, and she came to realize it because she has a sister that lives in Novi and a sister that lives in Commerce Township, and they had to come over to her house to take care of water needs that, that, they had no pressure at all, and so she was very pleased with the foresight that earlier councils had, and certainly, I, I was happy with that and happy with a lot of the other feedback that I got. I think that, that one of the things that, that I think, and what I took from the election is that, that the fact that, that I've been on council as long as I've been, and I decided to run for, for mayor, and, and the fact that people actually came out, nobody ran against me, the, the, the fact that three council members that, that ran for reelection were reelected, it, it tells me, anyway, that, that the public, the people that vote, the people that care enough to vote are, are satisfied with what we're doing up here, despite any little differences that we might have. They, they support us and, and they appreciate what, what we've done up here, so I, I certainly appreciate that. And the other, the last thing I wanted to mention was, everybody knows about the sixtieth birthday or sixtieth anniversary of, of the city coming up and the, the police department that we just celebrated. There was a, a dinner that took place about a week or so ago, put on by, by the police department for former police personnel and current police personnel that has worked or is working for the city, and, and I was fortunate enough to, to attend that dinner. It was very nice and very, very nice program put on by, by Director Moore and his staff and volunteers, and it was a very, very nice, the presentation was good. I think there's a, there's a, like, a slide presentation that's available. Would it be available to others, Brown, or...
Yes, absolutely. I'll make it available to all of us.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be interesting, if nothing else. I mean, it was, it was fun, and it meant, certainly meant a lot to the people that, that worked at one time with the police department because it brought back some memories. We were able to, to visit some of the people that we knew from years ago, and, and some of the new people were able to talk to some of the old people, and it was kind of nice. And, in any event, having said all that, I'll, I'll call for an adjournment, and we'll, we'll go to executive session. Thank you for everybody that, that came out tonight, and see you then.